Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Transportation Committee meeting of December 7, 2016. I'm Councilmember Mike Bonin, here along with my colleague David Vrue from the 4th District and Mr. Wezar from the 14th District, who is in the room. So, thanks, everybody, for being here today. Let me begin, as is my custom in this committee, with our multimodal roll call. For those not familiar with it, by a show of hands, can folks tell me who in the past month has taken a bus as a way of commuting? All right, very good. Train? Okay. Bicycle? Any skateboarders? I was expecting Joe Linton was going to raise his hand on the skateboard. No? Ride share? Car share? I imagine we might have a few in there today. And pedestrians? Everybody's supposed to raise their hand on the pedestrian one. Okay. And I also want to take a moment to wish a happy birthday to Jeff Thompson, my interim transportation deputy. Jeff, happy birthday.
So, colleagues, I am going to recommend we move items 2 through 8 on consent.
Any objections? Okay, without objection, items 2 through 8 will go on consent. And I am going to recommend we continue item 11, the Parkway Parking Enforcement, until January, when we take up a bunch of other parking-related matters. So, without objection, that is the direction of the committee. With that, let me ask now if there are any general public comment cards? Any general public comment card? Okay, so the general public comment is closed. Let us begin, then, with item number 1.
Item number 1 is General Manager of DOT to present a verbal report relative to the recognition of LA DOT employees for outstanding service.
Why don't we bring the recognized employees up as well, so we can actually see them? Oh, great, okay, all right.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the opportunity to recognize some of the outstanding folks that we have at LA DOT. I'm going to begin by recognizing, and please stand when I call your name, Sergeant Alicia Cordova in our Parking Enforcement and Traffic Control Bureau. Sergeant Cordova joined LA DOT as a traffic officer in July of 1989, and throughout her career, she has consistently demonstrated great commitment to her work, and her professional conduct is exemplary for others to follow. In August of 2008, she was promoted to the rank of sergeant and assigned to the Hollywood Area Office, where she continued to excel. Because of her skills and abilities, she was recruited to fill the vacancy in Headquarters as the Return-to-Work Coordinator for Parking Enforcement. In this capacity, she interacts with employees and HR to determine appropriate work accommodations for individuals and helps facilitate the return of injured employees. In addition, she also coordinates the Department's Enforcement for Disabled Placard Abuse, which has tripled this year. Each of the five area enforcement offices conduct weekly operations to locate motorists that abuse or misuse the disabled parking privilege. These violators are issued a citation, and their placard is confiscated. Sergeant Cordova has been instrumental in providing training on effective enforcement techniques for DOT staff. She also serves as a department liaison with DMV for our enforcement activity. Last year, officers issued approximately 1,200 citations and confiscated over 500 placards. This year, we greatly exceeded this result by issuing over 1,600 citations and confiscating 744 placards. Sergeant Cordova is an outstanding member of this department, who provides an excellent example for all traffic supervisors and officers to follow. Thank you for providing the City of Los Angeles with your outstanding leadership and dedication throughout the past 27 years. I would also like to recognize Chuck Hammerstein, Transportation Planning Associate from Mobility Management Bureau. Starting with the 2016 fiscal year, Chuck Hammerstein assumed the duties of the Transit Safety and Security Team Leader. In his short tenure, Chuck has raised the level of safety and security within the transit program, training with peer safety and security managers in the region, participating in tabletop operations, and finally, most importantly, establishing a transit bus policing program, has shown Chuck's eagerness to bring about needed change to our safety and security program. Transit Bus Policing Program resulted from Chuck's hard work in tracking down the appropriate staff person at LAPD, convincing them to provide the transit bus policing, helping to write the memorandum of understanding, and finally, to implement the program this past July. The results have been stellar. Our bus contractors, drivers, and most especially, our passengers, all agree that having the police ride along on the buses has made their jobs easier and their ride safer. Chuck's determination and follow-through improved the performance of our Transit Services Division. We thank him for his 20 years at LA DOT. When passengers feel safe on transit, mobility rises. Thank you, Chuck.
If Chuck were to just stand on the bus, the way he was standing in the front of the room there, sort of the imposing figure, I wouldn't make any trouble on the bus either.
It took me about a year at DOT to realize that he worked there and wasn't there to just keep us all safe.
Congratulations. Thank you, again, Celita, for doing these presentations, and congratulations to Sergeant Cordova and to Chuck. Thanks for your work for the city. Really, very, very appreciated, and happy holidays to you. Colleagues, anybody? Okay, thanks very much. All right, that brings us to item number 9.
Item number 9 is a DOT and CAO report in response to an Englander-Bonner-Buskayna motion instructing CAO, CLA, and DOT to study the current and future needs of the city's ATSAK system and report with recommendations on necessary traffic system upgrades and improvements.
Dan Mitchell with the Department of Transportation, Assistant General Manager. So, we have been working--
So, you want to relocate ATSAK, and Mr. Hirano won't let you? Is that basically?
Quite the opposite.
Take no comment. No position on your comment.
We have locked arms, and we have a solid plan. And we've been working together with the CAO's office. The CLA's been supporting us. The mayor's office in a new strategy for how to take an appropriate next step for ATSAK. And the next step is actually to separate ATSAK, the operations facility, from the computers and infrastructure. So, trying to move the whole thing is a very large step and very costly. And so, the approach that we have vetted now is having the computers and the connections remain down on City Hall East and P4, and expand that facility adjacent to ITA's computing facility, but build a new operations center within the Caltrans building in the unfinished 11th floor. That presents the opportunity for the staff to interact and operate the center, and we have a direct connection between where the computers are located, but all of the people don't have to be in that space, underground and in a constrained environment.
So, you're saying the people would be in the same building as DOT Headquarters, and the computers would remain in the basement of City Hall East?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Given my experience in touring ATSAK in the basement of City Hall East, where, I believe, I saw stuff that was damaged from leaks in the ceiling, and saw that it was really not a particularly great space, and not one that I thought was conducive to the long-term care and feeding of computers and technology, why?
So, ITA has been expanding their facilities in that space, and they have an area that they have offered to the department. It's adjacent to their computing center and adjacent to ATSAK, where we would actually, using a grant that we have in future years, put in new servers, new equipment, in a new upgraded environment that has the fire suppression and meets all the power requirements that we need. In the meantime, we can, by moving the facility that we're using to operate to the Headquarters Building, we'll create power savings and create an environment that we can sustain in that interim period with the space that we have now.
Well, getting the new servers is good, but if the ceiling is leaking, it doesn't do you much good, right?
Good afternoon, Councilmember. My name is Ramon Soto, I'm with the CAO's Office Municipal Facilities Group. We currently have a council-authorized project to make major improvements to both the City Hall East electrical system, as well as the P4 area within City Hall East. As you know, there's some critical city operations that already take place at the P4 level. The LAPD has their server farm there. ITA has their server farm there. And the authorized project is about $17.5 million that Council has authorized to make significant improvements there. And so, the planned improvements, budgeted improvements, include a wholesale upgrade to the ITA server farm space, which is actually adjacent to the ATSAK space right now. As BOE is anticipating the improvements there, they're planning to include the area that is currently in the ATSAK's computer room space to be improved, along with the server farm space. And so, those types of improvements that Dan Mitchell has just stated include fire suppression system improvements, electrical system improvements, et cetera. And so, at the end of the day, P4 and all of City Hall East is going to end up with very upgraded systems. So, we expect it to improve over the short to medium term.
What does the short term mean?
An assessment has just been completed by BOE. They hired a specialized firm, and so, we're very close to be able to start design on that. And so, we expect that around 1918, 1919, we should go into construction. Construction period would be roughly 24 months.
1918, 1919.
So, you're looking at about 2020 completion, 2020, 2021, for a full. I'm sorry. I'm corrected here that 2018, 2019 would be the completion date.
Okay. And when would the DOT personnel be moving over, the ATSAK personnel be moving over to DOT Headquarters?
The estimate would be late 2018, it looks like.
Okay. So, how happy is DOT with this proposal?
Very.
Very?
Very.
Okay, all right. It sounded like one of those things where there was sort of an arm-wrestling match, and both sides got tired and just decided to just put their hands down. This is something DOT, you genuinely think this is a good thing? This will meet your objectives?
Yes. Because I think what we discovered is that the cost estimate to do it all on P4 or all in Caltrans was cost prohibitive. And so, this is a very cost-effective way to get the things that we really think that P4 cannot provide us, which is essentially, has more to do with the space, the number of personnel and the video feeds that we have than the actual servers. That's why we need so much space.
I'm not sure that Ms. Reynolds' microphone is on. I can hear you, but just want to make sure we put it on. And this will give you the space and needs to accomplish everything we're going to discuss about ATSAK 3.0 and the next agenda item?
My perspective is that this gets us the best of both worlds, where we get the space and the upgraded work environment and the ability to manage the system better, because we'll have the full video wall that we've funded and have, but can't use currently, in the Caltrans building, while avoiding the extreme expense of trying to get the power upgrades and the server upgrades into the Caltrans building, because we can fold them into an existing project that's already been funded and designed on P4. So, we feel like it's a good, it's a good balance.
And when did this kumbaya happen?
About a year ago. It was six months ago. Well, it was a Peter Marks stroke of brilliance, so--
And so, I thought there was still some issue, I was told recently, there was still an issue with a funding shortfall.
Yes, there is a funding shortfall, which we will be requesting in the budget. It's $2 million.
Correct.
Okay. And this is going to Municipal Facilities Committee on December 21?
Correct.
Okay. But for it to happen, the Council is going to need to come up with an additional $2 million over the next, how many years?
About two fiscal years. In order to get the money in place for the construction contract, it would be within the next two fiscal years.
Over the next two fiscal years, but there's stuff that can be done in the interim?
There is. You know, I think one of the questions that MFC is going to have to consider is if they're willing to recommend the project move forward at this point without that funding identified already, and I think that's one of the questions they will face in a couple weeks when they take this up.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, my biggest concerns are, I guess, answered, because if DOT, Celita, if you're happy with this move, because I know one of the first things when I got here, I heard about the P4 area and what that represented, but so, I guess there's no other location, right? There's no other, this is the best solution?
We exhausted, toured, analyzed, reviewed several other locations throughout the city, along with the CAO, Bureau of Engineering, and others, and the Department. So, based on a good balance of what the Department needs to get out of this, and where we think things make the most sense, mainly for the efficiency of our operations and having redundancy in our operations and a cost perspective, this is the best solution.
Councilman, I'd like to add that as we move forward and we start developing new city facilities in the Civic Center area, there may be an opportunity to actually custom-build and bring the ATSAK Center back into a city facility. And so, that's something that is currently being considered and part of the plans that we're looking at. You'll have an opportunity to vet that and to potentially approve that in the future. But in the short term, Celita is exactly right, this is the preferred solution.
And, you know, one last thing, visiting the EMD, the Emergency Management Department, that would have been, if they had a little bit more space there, that would have been an amazing place for you guys to be located, especially ATSAK, but obviously, we have a shortage of space. But, Celita, if you're happy, I'll follow the chair's recommendation.
Okay. All right. So, with that, we will receive this report, and I thank you. And if Celita and Dan can stay at the table, because we're moving to item number 10.
Item number 10 is a DOT report in response to a Bonner-Ru motion relative to instructing DOT to report in regard to the status of the city's ATSAK system to include proposals for expansion and related matters.
Before we start, we have one speaker card on this. Is John Holland in the room?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John Holland with CCA. ATSAK is not working in downtown. I assume there are high-congestion areas like CD 11, for example, and other areas on the West Side and Hollywood, where it's also true. But as downtown has brought jobs back from the Great Recession and increased full-time residents, many full traffic has increased. Now, add in the large number of lane closures from construction and bike lanes, and this problem is exacerbated. While we appreciate the need to deal in the future with automated cars, this is a problem we're hearing about a lot now. And we appreciate how difficult these congestion problems are, but downtown's workers and residents are often stuck in gridlock at rush hour, even if they, like I occasionally do, take the bus home. CCA is requesting that ATSAK be upgraded to deal with these problems in downtown and elsewhere to react to these impacts. So, that said, we will support the request for $2 million-plus dollars that LA DOT has identified. We also will advocate for future funding and ask you, Mr. Bonin, as a member of the Budget and Finance Committee, to please advocate for these funds as well. Thank you.
When have I ever said no to you, John? Okay, so, ATSAK 3.0. What is it? Why are we doing it? What's it going to take to get it done?
So, I'm going to give just a quick overview, and then let my very capable staff take it from there. I think that the city made a visionary investment around the 1984 Olympics, when we decided that we would have one of the best and finest transportation management systems, interconnected systems, in the world. And that investment, you know, we just completed, finally, the entirety of that vision only a few years ago. So, it took endurance and focus over time to deliver what is still a national and international leading transportation management center. But we know that it is not enough to sit on our laurels and congratulate ourselves for what we've already done, because as we look ahead and as we see on our streets right now, things have changed so much since 1984, and ATSAK is the key to our ability to manage them, manage the mobility of the millions of people that move around our city on a daily basis safely, reliably, and effectively. And we've reached, almost reached, the limits of what that initial vision can accomplish. And so, we've undertaken over the last year an effort to really think about how the city will prepare for the future of mobility, and what role ATSAK and how we can leverage our current investments like ATSAK to get us there. And so, this report responds to the desire on the part of the Council to hear sort of, how does ATSAK become the system and stay the system of the future?
Thank you. Again, my name is Dan Mitchell, Assistant General Manager with LA DOT. So, we've dubbed this ATSAK 3.0, because this is really the third generation of ATSAK. The first was that original system built for the 1984 Olympics that was expanded over many years to encompass the entire city, building out the connection to the signals and have a centralized tool that we can manage the signals. The second phase was adapting that system into a PC-based, rather than what was called mini-computers. They were really the size of a refrigerator, but they were called mini-computers. So, to a PC-based system that then introduced new algorithms that allowed us to really adapt to changing traffic conditions and address more ably incidents that happen throughout the city. And we are just in the last steps. And part of that second process was infill, if you will, to include additional detectors, cameras, tools, to allow that adaptive system to work effectively. And now, we're looking ahead to this third phase, as we're putting the final touches on that second phase, and we really are at the dawn of a new generation of ATSAK. Leveraging those investments that have been made, approximately $420 million in public funds have been invested in building ATSAK as we have it now, and we have this incredible connected system, where all of our traffic signals, 4,600 traffic signals, 25,000 detectors throughout the city are connected into one central system. And we have an opportunity to leverage that in order to respond to the future needs of our city. So, the ATSAK 3.0 program of, as we've described it, we really highlighted four different areas. Preparing for connected and automated vehicles, data sharing, using this system and all the information that we have to share externally and receive additional information from the outside, new applications using the tools that we have, and then finally, infrastructure investment to ensure, similar to the item we last discussed, that ATSAK stays cutting-edge, relevant, and effective. So, in preparing for automated and connected vehicles, we're really looking at being proactive in developing policies and in the environment for automated and connected vehicles to be as effective as possible. And we have the opportunity with ATSAK, we have information on where lights are green, how long, and so forth, the speed that is most effective for traffic to move through the system, transit, as well as vehicles, to share that information and to also fill in, even with additional information, what is available from connected vehicles, including continuous location, perhaps origin/destination information that help us to be more effective. So, it's those policies that we're looking in a proactive way to try to leverage ATSAK to be prepared as possible for the new evolving future. The second area is our transportation data. So, we have been a great partner in the region, sharing with the county what's happening in the City of Los Angeles and other adjacent communities. But we also are continuing to look for new ways that we can share this information and receive new information. One example is user-generated information. Instead of just relying on the detectors that we have in advance of every intersection that collects, you know, all the data, but only at one point, that by supplementing that with user-generated information from smartphone apps, for example, we can have continuous information, even though it's from a subset of users, that can fill in and enhance our information, help us to be more effective. Where other applications of sharing our data that we're looking at is sharing with our partners at Caltrans. So, most of our connections with Caltrans are, while we do manage the traffic signals at the ramps, most of our interaction with them is on a personal level. But there is a new system called the Caltrans Dynamic Corridor Ramp Metering System that provides us a new opportunity to coordinate the ramp metering on the freeways and our operation on major streets leading to them. We are working with Caltrans on funded project in the South Bay area, as well as working with them along the 405 and the Sepulveda Pass area adjacent to Sunset Boulevard in your district, Councilman Bonin, and looking at how we can better manage the capacity there by providing some additional space on the freeway, kind of metering the traffic into that space, so that there's more room to accommodate all the road users there. So, those are some of the ways that we're using our transportation data and looking to share that information to be more effective. We're also looking at how we can use ATSAK data as a planning tool and to supplement our other operations, so that we can reduce the number of automatic and manual accounting that we have to do. The third area is the applications that we can leverage ATSAK to achieve. We've mentioned before about the GoLA app that was launched recently as a way for people to better route their trips, taking into account all different modes and combinations of modes. We have also looked at how we can take our transit priority system and bring it into the new era using new communication technologies. We recently secured a grant from USDOT for $3 million to help implement connected vehicle technologies in the LA Promise Zone around MacArthur Park, integrating with our dash buses, looking at how it can help pedestrians and help improve safety and help our transit move better. We've also looked at how we can leverage ATSAK to help Vision Zero and our safety initiatives. One example of that would be the leading pedestrian interval that we recently incorporated into our software and have been rolling out throughout the city. And so, lastly, would be the infrastructure improvements. That's the fourth area that this ATSAK 3.0 program touches. We spoke about--
As you go through the infrastructure improvements, Dan, I know there's five or six you want to mention. It's been noted that we've been talking about ATSAK 3.0 since Mr. Vera Gosa was mayor, so getting this actually done is enormously important. So, if you could, to the best of your ability, indicate for each of the infrastructure improvements, what a projected timeline is and what the roadblocks might be to getting there.
So, as we're looking at maintaining the infrastructure, upgrading the infrastructure that we have, we spoke in the last item about the ATSAK Center and how over the next couple of years we'll be enhancing that and positioning that to be even more effective, ensuring that our staff is all in one place, that we can have all of the interactions with the system in a more conducive environment. The second area is our fiber optic network that connects--
Wait, on the relocating the ATSAK, I just want to reconfirm. We heard from Mr. Hirano, it would be 2018, 2019 for that?
Yes.
And?
Oh, yes, for the first phase.
For the first phase?
Yes.
And for the second phase?
The second phase is, I don't think that we've determined it would be a fiscal year or two after. It depends upon, it's contingent upon the ITA expansion-- It depends upon, it's contingent upon the I T A expansion, but that phase, and it could be designed simultaneously, but that phase, once the people are out of that space, then, and once the I T A improvements march forward to, I believe this would be the fourth phase of their project, then it would follow, fall right in line with that. I'm not, I don't have the exact schedule, but that's the, that's the plan.
And the hurdles for Phase 1 are going through the Municipal Facilities Committee approval and needing to find $2 million?
Correct.
Are there hurdles for Phase 2?
I don't believe there are any hurdles for Phase 2 that would, it would just follow the, I believe that I T A's improvements are in three different stages, and we would be the fourth stage to that, adjacent to their computing area. We have a grant through Metro to upgrade the equipment, and we would install that new equipment in the new area and then transition everything over.
I think the hurdles would be the ones, any of the ones that you would anticipate anytime you start doing remodeling on a building that's this, of this grandiose age. That would be the hurdle that I would identify, the unpredictability of trying to actually implement those designs on P4 and the things that you might uncover, discover in that process, and means we're on the tail end, that those would be, those could be hurdles for ATSAK.
Right, sure. Okay, you were going to go to fiber optic next, Dan?
Yes, so, thank you. The next stage is expanding our fiber optic network. We have several grant-funded projects that are providing us the opportunity to upgrade our fiber optic network to high-capacity fiber that will facilitate bringing our, advancing our camera system into a new digital age so that we'll have the capacity to bring back that video in a digital format as well as share that video more widely among city staff and the city family. That, there are, we're still in the testing phases of that. There are a number of grant-funded projects, and I don't have the list of all of them involved, but I believe over the next two or three fiscal years, all of that, all those upgrades will be implemented. I don't believe that we have any hurdles to implementing those. They're funded projects, and they just have to march through the, you know, the bin award process and move forward. The next, the next item I wanted to talk about with infrastructure investments is our new advanced traffic signal cabinet. George Chen is the head of our ATSAK R and D group. He's been working very closely on the national level to help develop the latest equipment standards so that we can continue to upgrade and achieve the, all of the possibilities that we can with our traffic signal equipment, as well, and just to accommodate all road users, new types of technologies and so forth, well into the future. We've also been expanding our traffic signal control program, that software that we have written and manage in-house. But, as I mentioned, the leading pedestrian interval is one opportunity. We continue to expand that software to address new applications, light rail, for example, the exposition light rail that recently opened in Santa Monica, there are software revisions that need to be made there. And then, we are moving forward to marching toward the future, that would be an all-digital video surveillance system. That's something that would happen probably over a decade or so as equipment is replaced, once we lay the groundwork, the foundation through the fiber optic network to make that feasible. What we are advancing is the data, is the video sharing strategy so that we can make that more widely available throughout our department so that we can leverage that in helping be more efficient in our work. And the final step is just continuing to reinvest in ATSAK through an annual maintenance program. I appreciate the council support for that in this, in this current fiscal year and moving forward. So, we're getting on a seven-year maintenance program so that we continue to invest each year and keep our infrastructure in the field at tip-top level.
Before this goes to council, could you just add to the report, just half a page, one page, just a little chart that, for each of these six things, says what the projected timeline is and what those hurdles are, just so we have it in writing? I think that would be helpful. A couple questions on this. You talked about the implication, or you talked about letting third-party applications or developers have access to the ATSAK system. What do we hope to get from that, and what have we seen from other jurisdictions, might be some risks or downsides or shortcomings to that?
Well, on the, on the plus side, what we hope to get for it, from it, by sharing, by creating a portal where our ATSAK data could be shared externally, is an opportunity to help improve the efficiency of the system when drivers and, in the near future, driverless vehicles have better understanding of how the signal system works, and, for example, a speed recommendation for, for driving upon a particular street. So, instead of, you know, people's natural tendency is light turns green, go as fast as you can, hope you get to the next green. But that's because they don't have a full appreciation for the synchronization in that approach. Whereas if you had the information that you only need to go 33 miles an hour and you'll make the next green light, you don't need to hurry up, you don't need to rush, then that helps improve the efficiency of the vehicle energy-wise, but also the efficiency of the flow of transit and vehicles through the system. On the other side, we hope to get is information from these connected vehicles about where they are and about where they come from and where they're going for planning purposes so that we can help the system to be more efficient.
And potential downsides?
The potential downsides are that it will take a, if we create this opportunity, it will take resources to maintain that portal, if you will, and either that would have to be provided funding through the city, or it would have to be monetized somehow so that there's a continual investment in maintaining that high-quality data.
I think we'd also want to be very mindful of, anytime we open up the system to communicate to vehicles, that we've opened up a potential vulnerability in the system to be exploited or hacked. We've been extremely vigilant about that up until now. We've had Homeland Security come, visit, and audit our operation and are extremely sensitive to that. And so, I think that that's the risk we'd have to manage against. To give you a practical examples, in the USDOT grant that we received, part of that proposal was that, to start with, our traffic signals would be able to communicate with the dash transit operators to let them know, hey, the signal's about to turn green, or you can dwell at this stop for a minute because you won't miss the next light, as well as beginning to experiment with applications like the traffic signal being smart enough to anticipate that a driver is about to run a red light and to hold the traffic on all red until that danger has passed. So, this is a sort of an era of piloting and trying out, understanding the limits of the technology, and that's why we're, we're sort of wanting to do this, these things in a, in a controlled environment where, where we're sort of testing things first before we decide how to take the next step.
And what's, I'm just curious about what sort of information would be shared from ATSAK, or if you've thought through it that much? Is it simply how many vehicles at an intersection may be going, how fast they're going? Or is it going to be the kind of thing that we'll be able to identify the make and model of car so that someone's going to want to be doing targeted advertising or something like that?
I think the interest that we've had so far from manufacturers and app developers is to get our real-time traffic signal data. When is the light going to turn green and how long is that going to take? We have so far held a pretty strong wall on that. That's not something we're comfortable giving true real-time data yet, but they're interested in, you know, auto manufacturers are interested in, for example, Audi wants to, does have in their, where they manufacture in their sort of home country, the ability for drivers to see the net, the light will turn green in three seconds, two seconds, one second, or go, you know, 15 kilometers per hour to get the next green light. And so, that's the kind of information that they're interested in providing with their users and their customers in order to differentiate themselves, to sell more vehicles potentially. So, it's not yet, the media, entertainment, commercial advertising applications haven't, we haven't seen a lot of that yet, but we certainly hear a lot about that when you talk about who's in the game on autonomous vehicles. Very much, you know, advertisers looking to push media and entertainment into those environments when there's a captive audience using an autonomous vehicle.
Have other cities, major cities done sharing of real-time information that we know of?
I understand that there are some cities that are sharing that information or working on agreements to share that information, but I don't have specific cities.
Not in the U.S. to my knowledge.
Okay.
I don't know what's wrong with my voice today. I don't have a cold, but, you know, I'm very, very excited about this ATSAK system and the City of L.A. leading the way into the next generation of transportation innovation. I just have one question. If the end goal is for a comprehensive, fully functional system that's capable of communicating with person, with personal and public automobiles, where are we today in the ATSAK system?
Well, where, where we are today is we have a world-class, state-of-the-art system that is built on, you know, technology that we've, you know, been developing over time, but it's not positioned currently to address the future needs. And so, the investments that we're identifying here and the projects that we're working on are to continue to evolve the system and prepare for the future needs. Right now, we're in a very good place. We have an outstanding system, we, that continuously monitors the traffic conditions for all 4,600 intersections. It adapts in real-time to new demands, to incidents, and it also facilitates us operating the system for special events like the Academy Awards, the marathon, the Hollywood Christmas Parade, those, those events, and we're staffing the center for those types of events, including construction detours, for example, with closures on Wilshire Boulevard in your district councilman for the Purple Line extension. So, we're getting the most out of the system that we have, but we're also preparing for the future and future applications.
I think it's sort of a closed loop or a one-way loop, right? So, we get all the information about the system and we use that to manage it without having our engineers have to get into a, I mean, I was down there the other day, there was a signal out in Northridge that went on flashing red, and within an hour, not only did we have a traffic officer out there directing traffic, but we were uploading the software to get that signal back to operation, rather than saying, well, it's going to take us 24 hours to get out there, somebody's got to look in the cabinet, et cetera. But we don't push information out. So, we're a closed loop, we're a one-way loop. The system is 35 years old, so it's pretty mature for what it can do. Autonomous vehicles are, I forget what year the design competition that the military ran was that put the first autonomous vehicle out, but they're like eight or nine years old, let's say. So, they're in like third or fourth grade, you know? They're reading like Where the Red Fern Grows, and they're really immature. We have a system that's very mature, but, and they, and as autonomous vehicles catch up in their maturity, we want ATSAK to remain very relevant and very, and able to capture and manage that trend as it happens. That's a ways off, so we have time, but now's the time to start making those investments.
And I fully agree. So, basically, we do have a good system, but it's not, but this is step one for ATSAK 3.0.
Right.
Which is why I'm very much looking forward, and basically, what can the council do to help to make sure this process moves along?
So, we're going to continue to, we have our, a couple of budget packages that we're putting forward that are very high priority for us around transportation technology generally, which includes investment in ATSAK. And so, we'll continue to bring back more information, as you would like, and specifics, and give you a sense of what we think the resource investment is in order to make sure that it continues to be the asset that it is.
Very much looking forward to those requests and looking forward to ATSAK 3.0. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your leadership on this.
Thank you. Just one last question. We talk about ATSAK and its advantage in real-time. I'm curious if there's any potential application for the following, and maybe there's not, maybe it's a different mechanism that does it. I think back to a day when I was in a budget hearing and the fire department was in front of us, and the then-fire chief did not know that there was a confluence of things happening that day. Expo was testing and it closed Lincoln Boulevard. There was a project in Santa Monica that closed PCH. There was work on the 405 widening that was impacting east-west, and there was this perfect storm that really would have made it impossible for the fire department to get additional resources into Pacific Palisades quickly, if necessary. Is, is there a way, and again, maybe it's a different system that does this, where we can load into a system that on December 18th, this bridge is going to be closed, on, you know, the, this six-week period, the regional connector construction is going to be closing these things down, so that if someone, some other city agency comes up and has a proposal to close something down, we can, someone can know, oh, this would be a really bad idea because nobody can leave their home, or this would shut down all these businesses, or, you know, we can, you know, make some plans and adjustments and know in advance, oh, wow, you know, there are six different agencies that are all doing something, we may need more traffic control officers out here this day, or we may need to be adjusting the signals differently. Does it have that in a 3.0, the capability to sort of look into the future?
Well, I think there's really two ways that we're poised to address that. One is the, the city does have the publicway reservation system, which does allow, does allow the reservation of certain sections of streets so that we'd have better visibility into what's happening. But our focus is really, rather than developing our own applications, to really be a provider of data so that, so that the industry can innovate quickly and develop systems that are very usable for the public. And so, an example, using that publicway reservation system, that's part of our data sharing agreement with Google, so that they could draw from that and anticipate the kind of, so when a user reports that there's an incident, they could try to match that up with a construction project that reserved that. The other way is sharing our data about traffic congestion in real-time so that it supplements what users generate. And so, but I think that truly what, you know, the application that people will be using will not be provided by the City of Los Angeles, it will be supplemented by data provided through ATSAK.
Well, but there's a couple things. One is, we articulate here that there is, it's also about investment in the fire vehicles themselves, right on cue.
Well, well done.
That, you know, here we've, thanks, city, right, you know, here we talk about an investment in a transponder that could go onto fire vehicles that today could allow ATSAK to provide traffic signal preemption. So, anticipating a first responder is arriving, the traffic signal cut, pulls everybody out on red and turns the signal green for that first responder. And then eventually, you could see, as the evolution of the fire vehicles themselves become more connected, that the system is, is sharing data with those vehicles about, you know, routes to take, not take, or routes that are closed, not closed. In terms of anticipating that in the future, we had worked together closely with our partners in Public Works and also at Metro, D W P, anybody who touches the utilities, the AT&amp;T and those folks, to start talking about what would a coordinated construction management system look like, because you could see all sorts of applications in that. And we have over, we have taken a couple bites at that apple to try and put that office of construction coordination together, because that would be the place where you'd have a person who would, whose job it is-
Yeah.
-to look in the future, forecast conflicts from a whole variety of perspectives, most importantly, safety.
Thank you, and I'd like to pursue that conversation more offline. It sounds like Mr. Ru would be interested in doing so as well. Two quick follow-ups on the mention of the transponders and the- Two quick follow-ups on the, the mention of the transponders and the, the LAFD vehicles. I, I made a note of that in my, in, in your report. Just LAFD, what about LAPD?
So the, the partnership that we have is with LAFD, because their vehicles primarily use the corridors where we have this system deployed. It really is a, is an application utilizing the LEDO2 Transit Priority System that was built in partnership with Metro, so along those main corridors, but it doesn't help with, you know, unsignalized areas and side streets and neighborhood streets, primarily with, along those main corridors where the, the fire department vehicles tend to travel. So that's where our partnership is there. It's also localized to particular fire stations or more adjacent, and so the, the engines are equipped with those transponders, so that they can make use of that system.
There's no reason we couldn't.
That still doesn't tell me why you wouldn't do it for LAPD.
It doesn't, it doesn't preclude
There's no reason we couldn't.
Right.
Okay.
It doesn't preclude applying, but that's not the, that's not worth pursuing.
And, and the second question was, certainly you want a transponder to send that signal and, and, and do the red lights for everybody else when a vehicle is responding in an emergency manner? If the firefighters are just going down the street for lunch, or if the police car is just doing a routine patrol? Is there a way that the transponder is not signaling, so that it's not screwing up traffic for everybody when they don't need it?
Yes, the transponder is powered by the lights and sirens that
Oh, cool.
So when, whenever they activate that, then the transponder's active and then activates the system.
Excellent. Okay. All right. Thank you. So seeing no further questions, we'll receive that and we'll be looking forward to that report and looking forward to additional updates.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us to item number 12.
Item number 12 is a DOT and CAO report relative to the proposed contract with Blue California for electric vehicle car-share operations using grant funds from the California Air Resources Board targeting car-sharing and mobility options in disadvantaged communities pilot project.
So before we have testimony from staff, we have four speakers, and I'm going to call up in a second. Before I do, let me just sort of preface this by saying, gotten a lot of letters from a lot of folks in support of this proposal. I'm very enthusiastic about it. I think it's a great thing. I think it's groundbreaking. I think it's wonderful that we would be doing this and, and putting disadvantaged communities first. That said, this is a contract, and the question is, is this a good contract? And do the details of the contract make sense for the city? The rationale and the, the, the purpose behind this is one thing. The question of whether or not it's a good contract for the city is an entirely separate matter that we need to sort of hash out here today. And we're on a, a timeline for this. My understanding is we lose the CARB money if we don't get this approved by the end of the year. Last council session this year is next Wednesday, so there's a, a time sensitivity to it. So I think we'll be getting into some of the nitty-gritty in a few minutes. Let me start with the four speakers. Sam Gregor from California Air Resources Board, Michelle Kinman, Kristin Pauling, and Ronnie Narula Woods.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Sam Gregor. I'm with the Air Resources Board. My section oversees the development of these pilot projects for car-sharing and mobility options. As you alluded to, the, this project was funded because it is ambitious, it's transformative. We believe this project not only provides greenhouse gas emission reductions immediately, but also provides increasing access to transportation for the low-income residents of these communities. You did mention that there is an, we are under a deadline. We have budgetary requirements where we have to expend these funds by a certain amount of time, so it is critical that, that this step be taken. That being said, you know, I, I do want to reiterate that we believe that this is a transformative project. This is one where we can either expand greater, greater in the city or in other regions of the state, so we're looking forward to continuing our, our partnership with the city of L.A. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle?
Good afternoon. I'm Michelle Kinman with Environment California, and for the past three years, I've had the honor to coordinate the Charge Ahead California Campaign, which is a campaign of five organizations, the Coalition for Clean Air, Communities for a Better Environment, the Green Lightning Institute, NRDC, and Environment California. And our whole focus is to ensure that we put 1 million electric cars, trucks, and buses on our roads by 2023, and to ensure that low-income communities, which are hardest-hit by pollution, are receiving the benefits of this transition to electric vehicles. And so on behalf of the full Charge Ahead California Campaign, I'd like to commend the city of Los Angeles for taking the leadership to first apply for this exciting program, and now to implement this innovative and much-needed program to provide EV car-sharing to low-income residents within the top 10% of the Calenbyro Green Tool. With this program, low-income Angelinos will have more options for getting from point A to B, all while cleaning up our air, improving public health, and protecting the climate. We urge you to approve this contract in support of the program and look forward to full council action. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin?
Good afternoon. I'm Kristin Pauling with the Natural Resources Defense Council, and the chair basically took all my talking points about why this is such a groundbreaking and important project. So I'll just say thank you to the LA DOT staff who have very thoughtfully crafted out the project, but also highlight the community-based organizations who identified the needs and the solutions to, that ultimately have ended up in, in the contract. And just to lift those folks up, that's the Salvadoran American Leadership and Educational Fund, SALEF, Kiwa, Career Town Immigrant Workers Alliance, and Trust South L.A. So I'll, I'll lift those voices up and say that we're very excited to move forward in a project that is really bringing shared mobility in innovative ways to communities most in need while tackling climate change and our air pollution problems. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is it Danny or Ronnie? I can't tell from the handwriting. Go ahead.
Ronnie. Hi. Good afternoon, committee members. Thank you for the opportunity to join me today. My name is Ronnie Narula Woods, and I represent the Shared Use Mobility Center. We're a national nonprofit that works with cities and transit agencies to provide technical assistance on the adoption of new technology in public-private partnerships, driven by a mission towards providing mobility for all. As a technical advisor to LA DOT and the city on this pilot project, we would like to emphasize the economic, social, and environmental benefits of this project. Beyond removing cars off the roads, this project will enable residents with new access to mobility options, particularly those who may find it challenging to get to work, to doctor's appointments, to the grocery store, or to pick up their kids from school. This pilot offers a unique approach to meeting the transportation needs of city residents and will place the city of Los Angeles as a leader in innovation. Thank you for the time to speak today.
Thank you. And if staff could come forward to the table? And just as, as you get settled in there, eager to hear about why this is good, also really, really particularly eager to hear why and how this is a good contract for the city of Los Angeles. And I can't speak for either of my colleagues, but the, the prism through which I'm thinking about this is what I consider to be the mother of all bad deals for the city of Los Angeles, which is the street furniture contract that none of this council voted for back in the late 90s. It was a long-term contract to provide street furniture, bus shelters, newsstands, public restrooms in the city of Los Angeles. It's been a pretty disastrous contract for the city of Los Angeles, hasn't given us what it was supposed to give us, and has caused a whole host of problems with any number of things, in, in, including advertising on, you know, bike-share program and stuff like that. It's just been a, a bad contract, long-term, we couldn't get out of complicating factor, and it's sort of, as I began reading the reports earlier today, it's sort of jaundiced my perspective on this a bit, and I really want to, to hear why this is a good contract for the city, and the issues that have been raised over the past couple of days by CLA and CAO and how they're being addressed.
Great. So I'll give an overview and then let staff fill in some of the blanks. So you've heard that, you know, this, this is about investing in electric vehicle car-sharing in a low-income community. And the reason why personally I think that this is a crucial program is that transportation is too often a barrier to opportunity and not a bridge or a ladder to opportunity. It is usually the second-highest household expense, and in Los Angeles, you can get to about 12 times as many jobs in an hour in a car that you can in an hour on transit. The more options and choices that we invest in neighborhoods that need them the most, the better we can connect people to a reliable way to get to their jobs, pick their kids up at school in the middle of the day, get to the classes that they take late at night when the bus doesn't run, and a million other reasons why people need lots of choices about, on how to get around our city. The second thing, though, that I want to point out is that one of the things that we spent a lot of time thinking about in the transportation technology strategy was how the city becomes not only a partner, but actually an activist investor in some of these new mobility options. And that when we go in to partner and invest public dollars into these, these choices, we should do them on our terms. Without our investment, I have no doubt that EV car-sharing would come to communities like Century City, like Santa Monica, and that's why the city being really an activist investor here and bringing public dollars here and, and assuming part of the risk with this provider gets us service in this community that we feel like the need is, is really great. This contract doesn't preclude other service providers coming into the city and providing something similar. It also really only governs the, sort of, the, the term of this pilot and the time when this pilot is underway in this particular neighborhood. So as EV, other EV car-sharing providers come into Los Angeles, or if this provider decides they want to expand outside this pilot program, we, the city and the city council, will have a check-in point and a moment to come back and revisit, reexamine, and discuss the terms of the contract. So it is a pretty controlled risk, and we've spent a lot of time with the city attorney's office, DWP, DOT, DOT's risk manager, the mayor's office, and, and many others, thinking through all of the different risks that the city is assuming, and have gotten to the point where we feel comfortable with this level of risk, giving what, given what we're getting in return, and the fact that it is mostly confined to and focused on this particular pilot in this particular neighborhood.
Marcel Potos, Chief Sustainability Officer, LA DOT. I think, I think to echo what the general manager said, I think when we, when we approached this pilot, it was looking at it from, great, we got this $1.67 million CARB grant to do car-share in a low-income neighborhood and electric vehicle infrastructure. I think from the lessons over the past several years where we've had car-sharing already existing in the city, if you look at the demographics, those areas aren't, those services aren't operating in low-income neighborhoods. That's one. The second issue on top of that is add the fact that there is going to be a big infrastructure investment for electric vehicle charging stations on-street. That's another piece. And so I think when we did, we went, when we went through the RFQ process and we realized that some of the, some of the, your more traditional car-share operators weren't coming, weren't stepping to the table, and there were actually a limited number of folks who were willing to participate in this pilot, it really was kind of, it was a wake, it was a wake-up call in terms of how much of an infrastructure investment this is, this is going to be, and how important it is that the city actually continue to work and, and negotiate through this contract. Because it's, for the first time, giving the department a view in terms of what it looks like to operate in low-income neighborhoods. And I think this question around equity is something that isn't just around car-sharing. It's something that's being done nationally and looking at bike-share, how does bike-share address equity? And so the model that we've developed with, with the steering committee to look at specifically, how do we remove obstacles to participation for low-income neighborhoods around this, I think was something that is, it was a great opportunity that for us to look at. Now, what we realized, though, you know, the CARB grant was a three, a three-year pilot model to provide seed funding for a partner to come in and develop a pilot in the city of L.A. What we realized is that, you know, this infrastructure investment, a lot of the, the charging stations themselves, these, these products have life cycles longer that extend well beyond a three-year term. And so that's really when we had to get into the terms of, how does the city assess risk related to the infrastructure investment, and how do they partner in, in taking away some of that risk? And that's where we've really kind of come down to a lot of back-and-forth, a lot of learning across the city, through DWP, with Bureau of Engineering, in terms of what are some of these infrastructure costs related to, what are the permit costs that are going to be associated to this, and how can we really step forward to support a pilot that we believe is going to bring a lot of benefits to the city in terms of learning around what EV car-sharing looks like, in terms of looking at how do we remove barriers, you know, around equity? And so I think that this has been, so, in that saying, also just in terms of the timing of this, this is something that we kept on working back and that we had to continue to extend the amount of time we were in negotiations because of all these new items that were coming to the table that we hadn't originally conceived of. So in terms of working with the CAO, you know, I definitely want to thank the CAO's office for their incredible work on this, because they were really, and I think this is the way the city works, right? You, you work in and you do your best of to execute a contract and sit down, and everyone's in the room, and ultimately, you don't catch everything. And so I think that the CAO's report was really, I think has acted as that needs to be. And so what we've done since the issuing of the CAO report, which was on Monday afternoon, is we sat down with the CAO, oh, actually Tuesday afternoon, we sat down with the CAO and the CLA to really address a lot of the points that they've brought up, so that we're making sure that we're supporting a contract that, that we can stand behind, that mitigates risk and understanding what the investment is and what the benefits could be.
So the CAO raised a lot of issues and did not make a recommendation. That's a little unusual for the CAO's office. Why didn't the CAO's office make a recommendation? And have the issues you've been raised been sufficiently addressed that you're prepared to make one now?
Thank you, Councilmember Ida Rubio, with the Office of the City Administrative It's not typical that our office doesn't make a recommendation. We were given limited time to review the contract, and it was a very complex contract to understand and wrap our head around. There were some concerns about the financial risks that the city would be taking on if, for some reason, we decided to terminate the contract, or if there was a breach of contract by either party. So in order to, since we did not have enough time to comprehend everything and understand what we were getting ourselves into, we didn't feel comfortable with making a recommendation either for or against the contract. It really, we felt it was policy decision for council and mayor to go forward with if they wanted to go down this route. What we did attempt to do was outline some of the areas we felt were of concern, or areas that should really be vetted before we move forward with the contract. We do believe that car-sharing, especially in disadvantaged communities, is a great idea, and we did meet yesterday with the department and CLA to talk about some of our concerns. We understand that some of these have already been addressed, and some of them still may be subject to negotiations. DOT could probably further elaborate on that.
Before I ask DOT to elaborate on that, having had the subsequent conversations with DOT, is the CAO's office still unwilling to make a recommendation?
I don't believe I'm in a position to make that decision. That would be up to Miguel Santana. We did discuss this with him, what our concerns were when we met with him on Monday. We shared with him our draft report, and the way the report is presented right now was based on his recommendation.
Okay. All right. Marcel?
So as, as I had mentioned, we did review these actually items point by point, and so I think, and, and as a, in result of that discussion, we actually had a phone conversation yesterday with the contractor, and we met early this morning to address a number of the open items. So again, would it be best to go item by item on the CAO report, or? So again, would it be best to go item-by-item on the CAO report or, I mean, from the South Recomment perspective?
Let me ask a few of them. One of the issues that was raised was what happens if the city terminates the contract early? What is our financial liability?
So there is a limit of liability up to $6 million that the city could be on the hook for at a maximum. I think it's going to depend on the year that the contract is terminated, looking at the investment that the contractor made. So I think off of the bat, the main piece right there is around infrastructure. And so what did it cost for the infrastructure investment to get installed? And so that's looking at the conduit and the cabling and also looking at the fixtures. So again, the city terminating the contract is the worst-case scenario, right? It's the city has decided, okay, this is something that's not working for us for whatever reason and we're going to walk away from this, understanding that there was, and this is not, and I think it's important to note, it's not in breach. If there are a whole nother set of conditions that apply if the contractor is in breach of the contract, then we would be able to terminate without any liability. Now, if the city decides, you know, we actually are moving away from electric vehicle car sharing and, you know, it's not something that we're interested in, then that's where we would be liable for paying infrastructure and operation costs in terms of services rendered. And so we have a breakdown of that in terms of what the estimated infrastructure is going to be and the operations.
That would come back to council, right?
Yeah.
That would come back to council.
So what has changed in the contract or in the conversations since the CAO raised this concern?
So actually, in the terms of, the CAO's concern on termination by the city was, A, what does the number look like? So we provided an additional context in terms of what that number looks like. So that's been addressed, so we're going in eyes wide open in terms of what that looks like. The second piece that was an item that the CAO highlighted is, what's the scenario in case that the city does terminate the contract? How much time do we have to pay? Where's that funding coming from? And the item that we discussed was, that's up to the city, right? So if the Department of Transportation is going to come forward to the council and say, we're ready to terminate this contract, that's where the department would come to the why we're terminating the contract, what that cost would be at that point in time, and recommendations on where the funding source would come to to actually terminate the contract. So those are the issues that were raised from the CAO. I don't know if you want to comment on that.
I mean, we talked about the different scenarios that where we would terminate the contract and they're all worst-case scenarios if for some reason we decide we don't want to move forward with the vendor because there's illegal activity happening with the use of the cars or there's public safety issues with the charging stations or the cars in the charging stations are not being maintained to our standards. There's a whole host of reasons why we might want to terminate the contract, but those are all worst-case scenarios. I think the intent of the entire program is that this is a partnership, as Marcel and Salida have mentioned, in that in order to implement this kind of a program, it does take a significant investment in infrastructure and that's something that this partner is willing to bring to the table. So the risk is, is the city willing to take on the risk on the back end if we were to, for some reason, want to terminate the contract in the long run? It is an 11-year contract. That's something to keep in mind, but those are all things that you need to think about as you move forward.
And if the contractor terminates the contract, then what happens?
I'm sorry, what was that question?
If the contractor terminates the contract, then what happens with the infrastructure?
If the contractor terminates the contract, we would be given the option to purchase the infrastructure and the equipment. We would be given 30 days to do that. If we decide not to exercise that option, then the contractor would leave the infrastructure in place as far as the underground cables and the conduit system and we would not be able to utilize them. The use of them would be subject to further negotiations. They will remove the equipment above the ground at their expense and they will make any repairs to the sidewalk according to our standards.
And under what circumstances? There are circumstances under which for our terminating the contract, we're on the hook and then there are circumstances that we're not. Are there circumstances here where we're not on the hook if they end the contract for certain reasons? Are we on the hook under all circumstances?
Only if they're, so we're only on the hook if we're in breach or if we terminate the contract. If they terminate the contract, then we're absolved from it, paying, we have the option, as Ida said, to pay for the fixtures and then negotiate the purchase of the, or the utilization of the infrastructure, with the exception of the DWP-owned infrastructure.
Another issue was maintenance and support. The city is required to fix infrastructure in the public right of way within 10 business days should the EV car share service be unreasonably impaired by the condition of the infrastructure. I have a hard time getting the city to repair stuff that's a priority for me within 10 days.
So that was something that was discussed. I think the one thing to notify is that there is, in another part of the contract, a section that alludes to what happens if the city is not in compliance or if the contractors not in compliance, they have 180 days to cure. So the 10 days wouldn't automatically go. So for example, let's say a tree falls and the roots come up and the sidewalk is destroyed and people are not actually able to use the car share operating station. So the city has the requirement to within 10 days, right? And so if we're not able to meet that, we have 180 days to cure and demonstrate that good faith effort to actually start doing that. But I think for the car share operator wanting to have a level of certainty that the city would be responsive, I think was critical for their comfort in the contract.
I've got more questions. Mr. Rue, do you have any you'd like to ask first?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm in complete agreement with the chairman. First off, I think this is amazing, this is an amazing pilot project. The only complaint I have about it is that it's not in my district, but it is adjacent to some of it. But in any case, I think this is an amazing pilot project that I would love to see happen and see the results of it. However, I too am a little concerned about the contract because even though it's a pilot project, it's an 11-year pilot project. So that's pretty long pilot project time. I just want to clarify, if the contractor, same line of question that the chairman was having, if the contractor cancels, then we have the option, I mean, if it completely holds us harmless, we could request them to remove the equipment. Well, we have the first opportunity to buy the equipment if we want, purchase everything, or we could request them to remove it completely and fix the sidewalk, so basically make it back to the way it was before, right? So, I mean, so if they breach contract, it's not a problem. Now, if we terminate, so if they breach, if they not cancel the contract, but if they have some sort of breach in agreement, then all of this would still stay the same?
If they breach, it's different.
Like if they terminate, those are the rules. But then what if they breach the contract somehow? Can we, yeah?
If they breach the contract, they would still be responsible for removing the fixtures.
Okay. Now, if we terminate the contract, in your report, it says, on page three, it outlines everything, but it says here $350,000 to $3.1 million a potential cost, but right now you just said 6 million. We could possibly be on the hook for 6 million.
Yeah, this number refers to the known costs for the infrastructure and the equipment. There may be an unknown portion, which is the delta of the 6 million, which would be for other types of costs, I believe, as far as like staffing.
Correct, services rendered.
Services rendered up to that point in time.
So the chart that you provide in Table A, basically add 3 million to all of them? I mean, or?
No, the chart in Table A is just referring to the infrastructure and the equipment, which is the known costs that we were able to estimate.
But would the unknown cost be the same and de-escalate it over the years or will it, if it's personnel cost, would it increase? I mean, how would the unknown 3 million look like?
How would that be calculated?
Yeah.
So on the infrastructure, the still amortization schedule would apply. And I think that what then also would apply is the operations costs in terms of staffing.
So in the beginning, you could say staffing would be lower and it'll start going up. So will it be an inverse of the infrastructure and equipment? So year one would be, potential cost would be?
Could be minimal.
Minimal, but then if we wait till year eight, we're looking at $2 million?
That's right. Then it'll get to a point where the service plateaus in terms of the operating costs. But in the, so in the first years, the service, the operating costs will be less and it will rise, 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 and then it'll plateau at the operating model.
Do you know what the operating level is? It's not 3 million, right?
So we've been able to, we've been able to look at some of the operations costs, but and there, the contract language says that based on, there's a reasonableness, like kind of limit factor. And so we know that that cost will not exceed $3 million in terms of the operating costs.
So bottom line is, I'm a little concerned because this, on the report, on the CAO report, you said 350 to 3.1 million and you gave a little chart that shows that there's a decreasing potential cost, but with this unknown 3 million, now it looks like it's going to be fixed at 3 million, no matter when we terminate. So, but I don't know if that's a...
No, I imagine that, so it's, yeah, in the first year, it's low, but over time, you know, if we terminate in a later year, we're paying for those nine years of operations.
Right, but what I'm saying is, in the first year, if we terminate, the infrastructure and equipment cost could potentially be 3.1 million, but the personnel cost will be low, say 100,000, so it'll be 3.3. But then year seven, the infrastructure cost is going to be 1.2 million, but the personnel cost could be 2 million. So again, it becomes 3 million. So I mean, I don't know if that's, we're kind of spitballing it right now, so I mean, I just feel uncomfortable on the liabilities. So that's a big concern that I have. And the secondary concern is, on the DOT report, on page, what is this? On page seven, it says, "At the end of the 10-year lifecycle, ownership of all infrastructure and fixtures shall transfer to the city." Do we want it at the end of 10 years?
So we've flagged that as well since the publication of this report and we worked with the contractor to create an option clause to purchase the infrastructure or to...
For them to take it out?
Right, but I think there is also in terms of the cost. So for example, at the end of, at the lifecycle, if there is an agreement that the city does not want the fixtures and does not want to purchase the fixtures, there's a couple, there's one scenario, for example, that says, okay, city doesn't want it. In that case, we're actually agreeing to split the cost of the removal of the infrastructure to share that risk. There's another scenario at the end of 10 years, at the end of the lifecycle, where we can decide that we actually want to, we have a different idea for that infrastructure and we will look at potentially passing on the cost to, for example, another EV charging station operator, another EV car share operator, or it might be something that the city actually wants to utilize itself and maintain, but not maybe have the fixtures, for example.
What's the lifecycle of these stations and reservation kiosks and metal?
10 years.
10 years? So at the end of 10 years, there are depreciation and it might just be worthless, so we want to remove it.
The cabinets probably, but the connections underground and the, you know, sort of, since we just were talking about ATSA, the hard cable underground is still useful to us, even though traffic signal above-ground technology has changed over and over again. So we might say, look, we now have Level 5 chargers and we have this new company that's going to come in as part of the cost of replacing the cabinets, you know, they're going to take these old ones out, but they're, we're going to still use the sort of connections underground.
So again, you know, you highlighted that too. I mean, if we could strengthen that language in our favor, because at the end of 10 years, we should have a clause where we could ask them to remove it. But, yeah, so I mean, I want this and I don't want us to not meet the deadline because I think this, I think you guys could work this out and I think the chairman probably has some ideas on how we could work this out, but I want this to happen, but I want to ask also, it's an 11-year commitment. I don't want us to be, I mean, we're funding ATSA, we're funding all these other innovative things that we just talked about in this meeting. I don't want this to be another boondoggle.
I think it's reasonable for you to give us direction about that item in particular.
Okay, so, thank you, Mr. Rue. I really want to make this happen. I do not want to miss this deadline. I think this is an exciting thing for Los Angeles. I think it's an important thing for Los Angeles. I think the fact that we can do something that is environmentally friendly, that starts in a disadvantaged community, is good for the city of Los Angeles, it's good for the people of Los Angeles, it's the right thing to do. Too many, as we have heard our legislative leaders from Sacramento say repeatedly over the past year, there is not enough emphasis on doing right by the environment in disadvantaged communities. It's, I think it's absolutely essential to do this. Having said that, I'm not quite comfortable yet. I want to be comfortable by next week and I think I can be comfortable by next week and I think my colleagues can be comfortable by next week. What concerns me is I feel like there are still moving pieces. I have, you know, my notes from my staff, which have the CAO report and there are handwritten notes that say, well, this has changed since the CAO report was written. What I would like to do is, I would like to ask the CAO to do a supplemental report. Based on the continued conversations that DOT and CAO and the operator have had over the past few days, I would really request, to the extent possible, that the CAO make a recommendation in the supplemental report, given that there's been a lot of new information and that, you know, if there's a few more yards that needs to be run to cross the finish line, the CAO provides some assistance with that over the next few days. I think it's really clear, we all want to get this done, but we want to make sure that it's done right. So I know we have to have this approved by Wednesday, so I'll ask for two things from the clerk. One, I'll ask for a placeholder in council for this council file, so we make sure we can get it done. And two, to make sure we can discuss this further, I will schedule a special meeting of this committee for Monday afternoon at 3:30. And if we can have the supplemental report by then, we can get this approved in committee and council prior to the deadline.
Mr. Chair, one more quick thing, which I forgot to mention, your outreach for your pilot locations. I believe you're doing it in English and Spanish and another language, I think, I can't remember, but if you could possibly consider, since you have Koreatown as well, Korean, or any other relevant languages in those areas.
Okay, so is that recommendation giving anybody complete heartburn, other than the CAO's office that I just added a lot of work to? Okay, so just for anybody here listening, because I respect every organization that has sent us a letter, we want to get this done. We just want to make sure it's done right. So we're setting it up so that we will have time to get this done next week. We will not miss the deadline for the contract. We just want to dot a few i's, cross a few t's, and I think perhaps add a few letters to the alphabet to make sure this is done. So, Mr. Clerk, is 3:30 on Monday okay for you?
I will see about arranging a room for 3:30 Monday. We will need the report though very early that morning at the latest, Monday morning, the response.
CAO, do you need me to do it Tuesday morning?
No.
I don't know if I'm going to get a quorum. It may be a recommendation from the chair or it may be a, just a report from the chair and a member. I can do it Monday afternoon or I could do it 9:00 AM Tuesday.
That's fine. We could, Monday or Tuesday, it's your pleasure and you can make the recommendations for the chair if you so desire.
We can work to have it to you by Monday morning. You need it by Monday morning, you said, the latest?
So Monday afternoon will work?
As far as meeting time, we'll make it work.
Okay, great, awesome. Okay, thank you, everybody, and that'll give us plenty of time to make sure everything's done right. Okay, is there anything else on the agenda? Okay, thank you very much. We are adjourned.